Welcome to the February 14th zoning board hearing. We have actually only two items, actually we'll come down to one item. The attorney is here representing the first applicant and I got a letter in the file here. Chairman and members of the zoning board, as you know, the firm represents applicant Cortlandt Street, Anki LLC, regarding its application for an earth removal special permit on the applicant's land abutting Cortlandt Street. On behalf of my client, I'm ready to withdraw the present application without prejudice. Should the zoning board have any questions or concerns regarding the proposal to withdraw, please do not hesitate to call. So, this is the official notification you're withdrawing based on the current application, which was a earth removal permit, so they must be reworking things. Okay.
Updating plans.
For the benefit of the neighbors, this whole application has been totally withdrawn without prejudice, so this could very well come back as a brand-new applicant with a new strategy. So, I just want to let you know that that's what this letter came in today from us. So, they've totally withdrawn the application, so there is no hearing.
Due today?
Monday.
It came in on Monday.
Put the attorney's name on that.
This is Attorney Joseph Antonellis. Okay?
Okay.
You feel free, if you need a copy, you can grab it up at the.
I would like a copy. We would actually all like a copy.
Well, you can swing up to.
And we would all like to know why we didn't receive notice of tonight's meeting.
Again, I'm not, that's not my, I don't do that.
Who does that for you?
It's certainly not me, it's on the applicant's behalf, not on my behalf.
Notify the abutters?
Yeah, the abutters get notified the first time, then it's up to council when their clients after that. I mean, you don't have to legally formalize after the first advertisement.
Even though it's been called four or five times.
But he has been trying to keep everybody up to date.
He has not.
Well, again, I can only do so much based on what I have and more than likely, they'll probably rework something so that you'll be, certainly it'll be all certified, notice it in writing again from the town.
Once we were told that we would be notified about this meeting, and we weren't.
Again, I'm not represent, I have no.
So, the zoning board doesn't have.
I'm going to have to take that back to his council.
So, this is the new council?
No, this is one of, part of the law firm.
Oh, of the same law firm?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
Okay.
Now, until then, I've already contacted the town engineer.
Yeah.
He was out on my property.
Yeah.
I'm getting flooded, constantly getting flooded. Now, I'm getting water in my basement. I got it all, everything on video. I've already contacted the, contacted the EPA, and I got an attorney involved.
Okay.
They have to do something about the water. I called Attorney Antonellis last week, two weeks ago when we had that huge rainstorm. He said he was going to take care of it, never seen anybody. So, nobody's told, called town engineer, Mike Dean, never calls me back. So, they have to do something about this.
I would, if you're getting into that type of roadblock, start with town council, see if you can feather it through that way.
We're talking to everybody.
But we don't have the purview to even make any decisions on this because there is, there's no hearing.
We're talking to everybody and nobody has any answers, nobody gets back to us on anything. Because it seems like whoever owns the land is part of, part of a town employee or works for the town or part of the zoning board, so they have to do something about the water. I have an attorney involved, I've got calls to the EPA.
Then I, if you have an attorney involved, I would definitely go with that route. That's actually going to be.
It's not just one house, it's all the abutting neighbors that are having water damage.
Everybody.
Okay.
I've got water coming in my basement, I mean, the whole backyard is completely flooded. I got videos of it all, and I called Mike Dean, and I got no answers.
To get out of my driveway every morning, every morning, it's just ice. There's people that have fallen.
Okay.
The other day, I came down.
Nothing is being done. I have to call every morning for them to go and stand.
Well, again, we can't hear the hearing, we understand your frustration. I think at that point, you need to.
It seems like seven acres is a lot more than just cutting down a couple of trees. To me, that seems like land clearing, which wouldn't you, we would have to be notified when they have to be.
Well, they didn't have the permit, they didn't get the notice. They haven't gotten it yet. That's the whole thing.
Again, I have no, no, on the development side of that stuff, as far as, as far as this board's concerned.
So, if you guys don't approve, then whoever them is, cutting down all the trees and land.
There was never, there was never, there was never a plan, so.
They were scrubbing it, they completely ripped everything up.
You can cut trees in your own yard.
But seven acres is not kind of.
No, I did not.
They weren't cut. Before we get.
Again, I'm not here to get into a major discussion because we really aren't part of the hearing process here tonight for this particular application. We're in for Mr. Garrett's vote to oil application is the second application. They have withdrawn, I would take your concerns to their attorney and go through, and go through that.
Who won't call us back?
Then you've got an attorney, he said, so.
Okay.
I would utilize that, that mechanism if you have to.
The selectmen meeting.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and move this up.
Okay.
So, and let's bring it up to the selectmen meeting.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, that being seven ten, we need to jump right on to the next hearing. This is on the application of vote to oil. Oil Company One, Roberts Road, Plymouth, Mass. for a special permit pursuant to section 2.3 at the zoning relation to a parcel of land located in 111 Cedar Street in Milford, consisting of approximately two and a, 2.8 acres more or less, which parcel is owned by Cedar Enterprises on Level Street in Mendon. Relief is sought in order to permit the construction of a self-service gasoline station with an attendant and service pump island. With that and the application.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to dispense with the reading.
I have a motion from John to dispense with the reading as long as what we're discussing is exactly as written in the application.
That is.
With that, I have a motion to dispense with the reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, approved, that's unanimous. With that, sir, please go ahead and give us an idea of what you're going to do. I see we have the site plan, thank you for bringing in the large copies.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Eli Leno from Mayor Antonellis, Jakowitz, and Huronis, representing Volta Oil, and I'm joined tonight by its President, Peter Garrett, who will also be able to answer some of the technical questions that I might not be able to about gas stations. This is a matter of first impression for this board. We are the group that got the zoning bylaw changed at town meeting, and now this is the first application for this type of self-service facility in Milford. One of the things that's been brought to my attention is that there's some questions about the terminology used at various gas stations. You all have the plan in front of you that shows there are five pumps on this bank and then two over here servicing diesel. And what I was told by Mr. Garrett and have now learned is that each one of these, it's one pump and it services an island on each side. So, at each of those, there's two islands in a, in gasoline station parlance. So, that was something that, as the bylaw says, footnote 32, self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times. And there was some question about whether or not having this island here was sufficient to meet that bylaw, and we are of the impression that it does. But again, this being a matter of first impression, we certainly open to talk about this with the board, and also think that there's some possibility that there's more desire for full service, and that's something that we could also reinvestigate down the road depending on how many people want to use that full service aspect. And I have one other update about the fire suppression systems, which, as we've discussed through town meeting and at the different hearings about this, is significantly more robust for self-service based on not having as much personnel necessarily involved. The fire suppression plan has been approved by its Lieutenant Denman here in town and now is on its way to the state fire marshal for review by that board. So, progress is being made, and once we have the state fire marshal's approval, we'll be able to put in the, the full fire suppression system.
So, we like, just to clarify that, it's already been approved by the state?
Oh, okay.
So, the state fire marshal has signed off on it. So, basically, the process when you, in the state of Massachusetts, when you have a self-service gasoline station, you apply to local fire department, the local fire department signs off, it goes to the state, the state does their review, they sign off. So, we have a signed plan back that's been approved by all fire prevention, both state and local.
That was going to be my next question. This is a progress print plan, Peter? Is there an as-built plan or a different plan? This is showing progress print plan, is that what that is?
This is, I was mistaken earlier, Chairman, it is stamped and this is the full, and Mr. Garrett was able to let me know that there is a two-sided fuel pump at each of these. The chairman and I were discussing whether.
That was my next question. Is there two pumps under each canopy, two?
No, just one.
There's one.
So, when you say two pumps under each canopy, so there's one large, I don't know if you've been by it.
Yes, I have.
But there's one large canopy across, across the entire pump, all the pump islands, and basically, a, there's five pumps of which each one is two-sided. So, if every single pump was taken, there would be 10 cars under the island fueling up at one time. And then, this is another separate canopy.
Diesel, yeah.
And the way that that works is that actually has two islands. There are actually two pumps, but these larger trucks, what they have, some of the larger trucks actually have tanks on both sides, they call saddle tanks. So, this is what they call a master and satellite. So, even though it's two pumps, that, with two hoses that fuel both sides, it can only fuel one truck at the same time, so.
Two pumps go into one bolt, yeah.
Yeah, so each side, you're pulling a hose all the way over those.
So, that diesel island can only fuel two. It only has two. That diesel island only has two hoses, period.
It actually has three. So, what happens is there can be a truck that comes in that fuels there, and there can be a truck that comes in and fuels there. This truck that is on the outside, the closest to the tanks, that one doesn't have the capability to have a satellite fill on his, on the passenger side of the vehicle, only one hose. So, you've got a hose here, a hose here, all tied into one meter for one truck, and then you have another meter over here, so if we did have overflow, we could fuel two trucks at the same time.
You have nine self-serve.
And we have nine self-serve and one full.
So, there's only one hose that's full?
There's one hose that's full. Yeah, so you could fill one car at a time.
Under the, under the bylaw, it's requiring one pump island has to be full-serve, correct?
Correct.
And one pump island is two hoses, isn't it?
Right, right. You can't have.
This is showing one.
Based on, based on the bylaw, based on my discussions, there needs to be one self, one attendant that's, that is, that's servicing that full-service pump island, not pump, but pump island, the whole island, that whole unit. So, if you've got, you can't do full service on one side and self-service on the other. That island pump has got to be both full-service.
I think.
That is my understanding based on the bylaw and my understanding based on the town plan. If you're thinking differently, we need to know that, but that's what my understanding is.
So, we have no disagreement on the words, obviously written, footnote 32 here, but I think there's an ambiguity about what constitutes an island versus what constitutes a pump, and it doesn't say that we have to have one pump that's full-service, but one island, and in trade usage, that means.
Pump island, it says.
I understand that, but what.
It's pump island.
Which would be one of these, an aisle is an island, so each of these pumps services two islands.
You're cutting his. That's not what you're indicating to us.
I'm just going to, going to throw this out to the board, and we can definitely work with this. I mean, it's, if you, if, you know, the board is like, well, you know what, you got to have both sides of that pump available, then, you know, we can work with it. I would throw this out there for future applications, and that's, you know, I think there's definitely some thoughts.
It's going to be a busy place, we know that, and there's going to be people, the elderly, especially our handicapped.
You're only going to be able to load one car at a whack. You don't want to have a full service one car at a whack. That's not full service. If you only have, if you can only service, you can only pump one car.
Yeah, so, so here's what I'm, so there's no, there's no requirement that we keep everything self-service or, about one island. There's only a requirement that we have some sort of full service. Now, the question here, right, is whether or not you have two, two sides of a pump or you have one side of the pump.
Right.
My, the only thing that I'm going to throw out there is that as another, if another gas station comes in and they happen to be one island, that's it. And they have really no capability to be self-serve whatsoever.
That's correct.
And there's several of those in town. So, why, my only concern would be if the interpretation is that you need to have an island, then there's going to be folks that I would imagine are going to have a, have, they're not going to be able to achieve it without substantial renovation of their station. In, in some cases, the, the size of the, the station or the property would prohibit them from doing that.
It's interesting, and by experience, I actually was at the station about two or three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And by the way, you did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
It came out great. And I actually went to that last island, and I, I asked for super unleaded, and the super unleaded was only filling up on slow motion.
Uh-oh.
There was three cars in back of me, and there were, all the lanes were full, and there was three cars in back of me trying to get in back of me at that time. So, I was there so long, they brought food out, because there was a hiccup in the, in the calculation apparently of the.
Yeah.
Of the, of the super unleaded, and it, I was there for 15 minutes trying to gas up super unleaded, and it was one pump. So, what happens when he comes, he's on a walker and someone else disabled comes up, they got to sit there and wait for one pump, for one full-service pump.
So.
Rather have both sides full-service.
Yeah.
Because if you've got one attendant doing one car and he's hanging out there in the cold, he could be filling up someone else's car that may, say maybe disabled next to him or in back of them, instead of someone sitting in line. So, that's just what I observed and what I saw and what I experienced a couple, three weeks ago, and I'm sure it's fixed now, but I'm totally impressed with, with the operation, the store. It's a great look, it's pretty cool, pretty retro. I, I'm a little bit concerned about only having one pump for full service. You know, if this was a double pump under that island, I'd feel much better.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
If it was two pumps and you wanted to use just one side full-service, I'd, I'd feel better, but you only have one. You had two, then I can, I would agree with you that one side full-service would be okay, but only being able to service one car is not full-service at a time.
You have a horizontal setup rather than a vertical.
Yeah, there are some locations that you're right, that they're parallel to the road, not perpendicular to the road, or they're, right, yeah. It just, you know, again.
And maybe it's something that, you know, we go out and we do the whole, we do that whole island, that whole pump first, and then if you feel that there's a need, that it's not, it's not the full service on that side is not needed anymore.
Sure.
You can come back.
Sure.
I mean, that's my, that's what I, I think is fair, but.
Okay. Yeah, just long as we have that understanding that, you know, we could come back at a later date, and if we're like, you know, hey, listen, what we're finding already is that.
They don't want to get out and pump their own gas.
And there's an overwhelming demand for it. I mean, we're out there and folks are like, no, no, and we're like, no, no, it's full serve.
Weather's going to dictate, somebody's going to drive through, get, grab a coffee, grab some gas, and not want to get out and take off.
So, we, we don't have a problem starting off with both sides being full-serve, that's not an issue. What we're going to do on the fire suppression anyways is we're going to cover the entire island. We're not required.
You have to do the same with the diesel?
Say again?
You have to do the same with the diesel?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so regardless, we'll, we'll, we'll cover the entire island, so, you know, if at a later date, we come back and say, hey, listen, we only need one side, or we want to, you know, switch it to a different island, you know, obviously, we'd come back here and let you know, but we have the flexibility to do that from a fire suppression standpoint.
Anything else on the plan?
Any questions you have, I mean, the, there's not, unless you want to get into the real technical stuff about fire suppression and whatnot, but obviously, the fire department has signed off on that and they're, they're happy with it.
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, you know, just comments from the planning board, which.
There's one more than I do.
I think even comments with the planning board that will be in the decision as well as that the, the service, you know, that full, that full-service island has to be attended, of course, at all times. Your employees, they're, they're all great when I was there, great personalities. I, I see the, the drive-through is now operating. How are you finding, you feel, I see on the plan, you've got mountable scored concrete on the island between the, the diesel island and the, the gas island, and it seems like that seems to be working, that flow seems to be working okay?
Yeah, I mean, we found that so far, that it seems to, even at peak times, we haven't had issues there. You know, the nice thing about the diesel island is that the trucks are channeled back behind the building, and then they, they have a nice flow, so they're not doing any backing. That's when you get concerned, is when they have to back and maybe in blind spots, but they have a nice turn to be able to make that turn. And what we did to satisfy in the, in the planning of this site, and I know Larry Duncan was very instrumental in a lot of that scored concrete, is we talked to him about turning radiuses, but he also wanted to make sure that there was some separation between that truck traffic and then also the main island. So, as you probably have know, it's a big site, so there's plenty of room for maneuverability, and it can handle peak times, so.
Oh, it came out great, really did.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. Took a while.
Especially there.
Yeah, yeah, and I think actually the other thing that the town was obviously real involved with and worried about was the, was the wall in the back, and I think that came out, that came out great too, from an aesthetic standpoint.
Yeah, it's kind of like the wall of China at Lowe's.
Yeah. It's big.
Good, yeah.
Nice to have a foreign nearby.
Yeah.
That took a lot of work. Any other questions or comments?
What's the, for the full-serve, what's to stop someone going over there and pumping their own gas?
So, this is what we're doing now. So, we had a little issue where folks were very aggressive about wanting to pump their own gas. So, what we've done is we changed the operation to, we actually, believe it or not, put it in self-serve mode, and you'll say, whoa, wait a minute, no, you don't. Well, what self-serve mode does is you could walk in there, you could grab the pump, and even if you put a credit card in, it will not dispense fuel until the person inside allows that to dispense fuel. And that's a by, that's a, that's a regulation in the state of Massachusetts. You can't have it on what they call standalone. Standalone allows you to go in there and put the pump. So, most of the full-serve stations in Milford, my guess is they're on standalone, so if you actually went into one of the other locations and an attendant didn't come out, you grabbed the pump, you put your credit card in, you probably could pump it yourself and it would go automatically. With ours, what we'll do is we'll have it all on self-serve, and by doing that, they're not allowed to pump until we allow it. Obviously, if they're going to that island, they won't, we will never authorize it until the attendant is out there.
Is there a microphone setup where you can let them know that that's a full-serve only?
Yeah, and we, and we'll have signs there.
I was going to say.
Right now, there are signs that say everything is full-serve, but there'll be an island sign that says, this is your full-serve island, and these are self. Because we'll probably have a little bit of education to do when that happens, because people come in and they'll think everything's self, right? And we'll say, ah, no.
Well, if they can't pump it, they'll find out soon enough.
Well, for the sake.
Yeah, when they sit there for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Well, for the, for the sake of, I numbered these one from left to right, one through five. So, from the sake of the decision aspect, we'll, we'll identify, is that the island that you're looking to do full-serve on?
So, I think, yeah, so what I, I think we have here is we have it labeled full.
Right.
And the other one's self, and we're just saying that this one here would be full as well.
So, I would say that island one, both sides of, of island one, both pumps will be full-serve.
Right, and one is going to be, as you're facing the store, the ones to the far left, not including the diesel island.
So, I think that's the northernmost, the northernmost pump, right, that's on the Hopkinton side?
That is the northernmost, yes.
Yeah, and I'm going to identify it on this plan, and I'll sign this plan as, as pump island number one. Yeah, I'll do pump, I'll do pump one, both sides of pump one. That work? And then I'll, we'll put in the appropriate, appropriate language for full-service only. Is there a, is there any technology out there where you can, you can have a light there if someone can't get out of a car? I mean, you've got full service, but how do you know, I mean, someone should be out there. If for some reason, someone's at lunch, who's next, who's going to know when to service this if a car pulls up?
Well, because we'll know that that's a full-serve island. I mean, that's how we've done it in the past in other municipalities.
Right, but you're now adjusting from going full-serve.
Yeah.
All the way down to having one person responsible for that, for that servicing that particular island.
So, I'm not quite understanding what you're.
Well, you're in the, how many employees do you have in the store?
Two, we'll have two at all times.
So, what are you going to do? So, one of those two, it has to come out full-service.
That's right, yeah.
How many square feet's the store?
5,000.
How many square feet is Duncan on this?
Oh, don't hold me to the exact number, but I would say it's.
He's signing the lease, right?
But it's probably somewhere around, I'd say they're probably around 1,700, maybe 1,700 square feet, something like that. Yeah, I, we're not anticipating, I mean, obviously, if, if it's different than most areas and there's a huge demand for full-serve, and I, I think the way the bylaw's written, we don't really even need to come back in here if we want to make another island full-serve.
Right.
So, if we want to go ahead and make two of the islands, you know, call it pump one and two, all full-serve, no problem with that, right? It's just what we're, you know, with, with the, way the bylaw's written, we need to have that one pump.
But if you've got eight people in the store and you, and you have one person out here, this person knows he's going to stay with the gas?
That's cor, he's got to respond to that, he's got to respond to that, and he's got to provide full service.
What's the mechanism if that, if we're getting, if we're having problems?
So, typically, what it's, what we have is if we don't visually see it, and we have visual, you know, contact, and we have, not only that, but we have pump cameras on every single pump as well, and there's a monitor. If you walk into that store right at the checkout counter, you'll see a big monitor that overhangs the checkout counter. Those are all the pumps, and we can see every single one of them. So, let's say we just don't see it, which I find hard to believe, but let's say we don't, there's a call button on that dispenser. So, that's the next thing, and then typically, what we have is, and we can do this at this site too, is we have a, we have a sticker that we can make that actually has this telephone number, and we talked about this in the whole process, right? And when we were talking about everything going self-serve, and then when we went back to one island, you know, so we can do those same things. Might the full-serve person have to wait for an individual to come out of the store to fill? Yeah, but that's not any different than every other gas station here, you know?
Well, if you take too long, they'll go to the mobile station.
That's what they'll do. And we don't want to lose customers, so, yeah.
Right, it's just that the cognizant aspect of if the store is busy and you're not.
They'll ignore that, that was what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they trigger peak times to bring someone in to pump gas for that full island.
Oh, yeah, so, I'm sorry, don't, don't get me wrong, if, if the, if the demand is there, we will staff more than two people. I mean, right now, we have some times during the day, based on food preparation, based on the fact, I mean, right now, we have two dedicated attendants, and that's all they do, they don't do anything else other than pump gas right now. We don't think that we'll need two dedicated attendants to pump gas because there just isn't enough, we don't think there will be that much demand, but we're going to adjust based on the demand.
Based on how demand goes.
Because the point is dead-on. Because the point is dead-on, if we don't, then they're not gonna come back.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, last word before we get ready to rock and roll.
We appreciate the board's time on this, and I think this discussion was productive, and hopefully, we are continuing to be the vanguard for gas stations here in Milford.
No, I, I think it's a great, I think the time is, it's, it's long, long overdue, and you, you did a great job with the site. I know it was a lot of challenging work to do, but it did, it came out great, it really did.
Good, we're happy with it as well.
With that, do I have a motion? We have, we have a motion, well, I'm looking for a motion to designate pump one on the northern side.
Pump one, island one, pump one and two.
Pump, yeah, it'll be pump one and two, full-service. I have a motion by, from Mark, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, I don't think we need any other motion, with the exception that the, the full-service island will be, will be manned at all times, I have a motion with, for that too, you have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by John, that the pumps one and two, full-service islands will be, will be manned at all times. With that, I'll take a second.
Second.
Second by Bobby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, that's unanimous. Okay, I believe that's the end of our hearings for this evening, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
A motion to adjourn, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, thanks for coming in just for us.